Good evening.
Good evening.
For coming. This is the first chair of Ramsgate Town Councils I've done for about five years, so. A bit rusty, so apologies. Thanks, everybody. I'm chairing the absence of councillor Knight, who's unavailable. So here we are to the Ammunities and Environment Committee of 20th of March. So item on apologies, we've got, shall I read them out?
Yes.
Yeah. Councillor Makinsun, councillor Auburn and councillor Crittenden. Have we got any other apologies? Thank you.
And councillor Lee.
Okay, and councillor Knight, obviously, yeah. Item two, declarations of interest. Are there any?
No.
Right. It's late in the day. Item three, minutes. So to approve the minutes, the meeting held on the 14th of July 2021, which you've got in your papers. So are there any comments, changes, or is it all okay? Let me make sure I'm there. Was I there?
I wasn't there.
Was I there? Sorry, was I there?
You were indeed.
Right, then it's all lovely.
Then it's fine.
Would you like to propose?
Propose.
Councillor Nixon, a seconder, please. Councillor Austin, thank you. Okay, so can we have a vote to approve the minutes of the 14th of July? All those in favour? Thank you. Any against? No. Thank you. Right, so on to items for consideration. Item four, the allotments report. To consider is Emma Cole, the allotments officer. Niall, you're going to take us through that.
Yes, yes. 90% for Emma. Okay, there's a couple of things that I'd like to consider and resolve. But first of all, just to let you know, 293 in total people on the waiting list. Some people appear on more than one. If they refuse an allotment offer, they come off of that list but not off of all the lists. Once the rest of the waiting list who have not responded to an offer previously, still have the name down for another site, are contacted asking if they were to stay on the waiting list. If they do not respond by a certain date, in this case Friday this week, they are then removed from the waiting list. Forty-three applicants have been contacted and today only one has answered to stay on the list. So the list will be reduced shortly by Emma. Plot officers centre out on a weekly basis. There are very few vacant plots. Chilton Lane East two, Chilton Lane West three, Summerton Gates or Cecilia Road one, Margate Road three and Sterling Way, which is Jackie Baker's, are two. So that's just to be noted. We've had, we don't want to set a precedent here, but we have had a request for a name change on a tenancy on Chilton Lane East. In 2014, a young lady who lives in Ramsgate put her name down and received a tenancy. She is still a resident of Ramsgate and has shown proof of address. That's not the issue. But her father has actually been tending the plot since 2014 on her behalf. He was, in 2013, he was offered the share of plot by another plot holder. But that fell apart and he has been looking after the daughter's plot. As you can see, by the photographs, a beautiful plot. Very well, very well maintained. And the request is that he actually takes over the tenancy himself. It's the same address as originally. There has been no notices to cultivate. The fees have always been paid well on time. And the recommendation really from officers is that not to set a precedent by handing it over to the father, but to actually allow this in this instance.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so any comments from the committee on this proposal, recommendation?
It seems quite reasonable.
It seems to regularise the situation. It's already there. Our records are updated, really.
The young lady is being asked to be the tenant. She still lives in Ramsgate. You know, the proposal.
Okay, can I have a proposal for this, please? Councillor, councillor Heathington, seconder. Councillor Green, Austin. Okay, all those in favour? Thank you. Majority.
Chair, could I ask about the 293?
Yes, it does rise. It's not, did you note, it's not a fast rise. It's.
Yeah, so we used to do publicity for people going on the waiting list and we've stopped doing that for last year and it's still been increasing. It's just word of mouth.
But it's not rapid.
Oh, not rapidly, no.
I suspect it may be a lot more with the cost increases.
These are very, very reasonable, very reasonable.
Yes. Niall, with the vacant plots, do they stay vacant for long? What's the sort of average?
Absolutely not, no. No, they're, Emma offers them out weekly. As soon as that comes up. Sometimes a plot is neglected and we have to give them a month's notice to cultivate. If they go, then we very often have to bring technicians in to clear it, just to stream it down and then it's offered out and they're snapped up. So there isn't an issue. This says we're left to prove our address. We brought this in because we had heard of a substantial subletting of tenants who live from outside of Ramsay. A new rule from 24 was brought in to say that you have to be a resident of Ramsay and you do have to show that you have that evidence, sort of driving licence, something like that, council tax bill, whatever. So, or the tenancy is forfeit because, you know, you should be able to prove for you. Forty-two plot holders in January had not shown proof of address. Emma has sent letters out. We still have nine plot holders who have not submitted proof of address or made any contact related to why they've refused this information. It's against the rule and therefore termination of their tenancy should proceed with a two-week deadline to remove any personal items. Recommendations for the committee to decide, but officer recommendation is that Emma does proceed. Because the invoices do go out in September time. So there's been plenty of time.
Councillor Green.
But in terms of payment, I know that's.
Sorry?
In terms of payment.
I believe so. Do you know any more, Dean? I believe they could have paid. They just haven't given that proof of address. So we don't really know that they are living where.
Sorry, I know the non-payment ones were due around the end of January and those ones have been removed from payment. So these are purely for.
It seems a bit harsh, especially if you are paying your bill and your plot is being well kept and maintained. So I know the rule's there, but sometimes rules are introduced and there's a period of a period of adjustment. It's a bit like, you know, you need to lose four staff from a school. Let's look at voluntary redundancies first before we go to compulsory redundancies. So is there any way Emma could, first of all, if they've not paid, then it's simple. It's terminated anyway. But no. Most people have allotments for a variety of reasons. Most people to get out and for mental health reasons as well as cultivating the vegetation. I would hate to think that we would be taking a plot off of somebody that lives somewhere else in Thanet and it actually ends up ruining their lives because it's, it's, it's. It would be me stopping, stopping, stopping me from running. It would affect me or exercise. It would affect me really badly. So I do think we should have a, there should be a human element to this and there should be an interim period.
Yeah, I totally understand that, councillor. However, the people of Ramsgate actually pay the concept. And the allotments are for residents of Ramsgate. They should not be subletting or from outside of Ramsgate unless they were inherited from TDC. So I'm not sure what potential.
Councillor Green, first.
If they're due to pay another year's subscription, could we, so we expect them to provide proof of address when they pay their next year's subscription? And if so, and if they don't, then we won't accept.
So that's paid twice, yeah. Yes, I don't see why you can't do that. It's entirely up to committee, to be honest with you. It's not up to us.
Councillor Nixon.
I mean, I'll be honest with you, as much as I accept what councillor Wing's saying, yeah, these are very much Ramsgate allotments for Ramsgate people. All they need to do is prove their address and that's quite important. Because we can't fulfil allotments for everybody, unfortunately, unless we buy land and we get allotments, which is something that we have the power to be able to do. But meanwhile, these are for Ramsgate. We would be doing other people a disservice if we were allowing anybody other than a Ramsgate resident there. I think that actually is the bottom line that we have to work from. You have to be a Ramsgate resident. After that, you know, then you can start looking at other things. But this is the one thing that we've got that has to be for Ramsgate.
Okay, councillor Austin.
I was just wondering what contact details for these allotment holders Emma has? Whether she's got phone numbers, whether she, if it's a small number of people, whether she can give them a ring? It may be just that they've got some problem which has prevented them from sending the information or that maybe they're not so good with stuff in writing or something.
Emma has residential addresses, email addresses, telephone numbers. I mean, what committee could decide is that we contact them again, giving them another month or something.
I would want to suggest a ring round at least to find out why they haven't provided that information. And obviously, if something dodgy going on, that will presumably come out. But if it's just that somebody has totally forgotten because something else is going on in their life at the moment, then we should give them the chance to prove that they're Ramsgate.
Okay, and councillor Wing. I mean, I still think that each case should be looked at where it isn't cut and dried. Because what about the scenario of somebody living in rented accommodation, evicted by their, you know, they took on, they took on the, they took on the allotment when they had rented accommodation in Ramsgate. They've been evicted. The only place they could find rented accommodation, cheap enough to live, was actually outside of Ramsgate. So through no fault of their own, they actually end up outside of Ramsgate when they actually want to live in Ramsgate. I just think we need to, I agree that if they, people don't live in Ramsgate, they shouldn't have our allotments. But I think we need to dig a bit deeper into, into the, into the reasons why people might not be registered in Ramsgate. So for instance, if, if they registered that plot in Ramsgate and for some reason they've had to move out of Ramsgate, then I think we should be letting them keep that plot.
Councillor Heathington.
Yeah, I understand what councillor Wing is saying, but your suggestion, which is about phoning round everyone and contacting with the contact details should kind of, I know it's time to see. It doesn't seem to me to be the most sensible way.
I think Emma has done her best to contact people. I wish to do, as councillor Wing says.
Yes.
Do you want to make?
Is it what, David, sorry?
Councillor Austin, do you want to propose?
Can I make a proposal that Emma does one more ring round to those people another month?
One more month.
If, if that is, does not produce the information that's required, then the arrangement is terminated.
Yes. Can I have a second of that?
Yes, I'll second it, but I've got something to say. Just so, to remind ourselves, a couple of meetings back, we did have a situation where a lady had moved to Margate and she asked to keep her allotment on because she'd moved out of the area, et cetera, et cetera. Committee at the time decided against letting her keep the allotment because it seemed unfair to anybody that was in the same position in a Ramsgate rented accommodation and what have you, under similar circumstances and hard up, to be able to better themselves as if somebody outside of the area took that plot. So that is actually in the minutes of a previous meeting. I'm not, I mean, you know, I want everybody to have an allotment as far as I'm concerned, do you know what I mean? So I'm not, and I'm desperately trying to take the allotments away from anybody. All I'm asking is that we check, because for this one scenario that maybe there might be other scenarios where people are living here for various reasons. So all I'm asking is that we check what we have. I'm up for the case-by-case scenario by looking at it, if, if the matter is serious enough for it to come back to a committee for anybody's benefit. And again, that's for the committee to decide, as it did last time. But at the end of the day, if people are subletting or whatever it is, all we need to do is just clear that up. It's just a matter of admin. It's not a matter of, you know, hanging anybody, is it? It's just a case of like, we just sort it out. So yes, thank you for proposing the month and let's just get these books in order, really.
Councillor Green.
I understand what people are saying, but I'm against that stuff chasing around. We've got a process procedure. That's, in my opinion, they haven't responded to a right request. It's not great, throwing mistakes at people just to provide proof of address. I think we should just let that procedure go through. Tell people that they can appear with that for the special case.
Okay, is that a proposal? Because we've got a proposal.
Got a proposal. Councillor Austin, we have to.
Yes, please, yeah. Councillor Austin proposing, councillor Nixon seconded that Mrs Cole has another ring round or makes contact with the tenants and gives a further month and then termination if no of a Ramsay addresses provided.
Can I stress particularly a ring round? I know it's more time consuming than sending an email, but actually it's much more likely that those contacts are much more likely to affect and and encourage people to.
I think we've got to make a lot of very difficult times.
Exactly.
We've got to have that little bit of largesse.
Okay, all those in favour of councillor Austin's proposal? All those against? Okay, it's carried. Thank you.
Okay, the final thing, I'm really pleased to report is, well, not the first half. There was an arson attack on Chilton Lane West. It was very targeted to the site rep. We don't know who did it. There's no evidence to, you know, think that anybody. But that, this is the result of the attack. He lost.
Oh, my God.
Tools and the two polytubes tumbled. And one is communal one. Where destroyed, where destroyed, sorry. So I put a claim into.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
I put a claim into the, to Zuri Car insurers and they paid every penny apart from the £100. And the guys down on the allotment site, this is not the technicians, this is actually the, the tenants and the site ref and they've now done it.
Oh, wow. Congratulations.
They've done it all themselves and they've failed. And there will be more, we will be buying more tools and things to replace what was lost. But they've worked really hard to get this established in time for the planting.
Niall, can you pass on that? Thanks for putting all that.
Yes, please do.
Sorry?
There's like a good scheme.
Councillor Wing.
On the message, on the note of fire, I was coming back from a, I don't know whether Maxine reported this, but I was coming back from a TDC meeting. Is it next? Okay, I'll leave it. I'll speak to the next one.
Did the police ever come back with any?
There is no evidence.
No.
This, this, so I've noted, I said, I've noted that.
Yes, yes. Yes, please.
The next, next thing is the Chilton Lane East fire was recalled. Councillor Wing and chief technician Maxine were called to investigate. We have established that it was an accident. It wasn't a bonfire. They were burning within the containers they were allowed to burn. And it's happened over, this, this has moved into it. And they poured water around it to contain it.
I mean, I drove back and it was a fairly substantial fire and I got back to my parking spot and rang Maxine and said, should there be a fire at nine o'clock at night on Chilton Lane East? She said, no. I said, right, I'm going back. She met me there. And it was a fairly hefty fire. And although they had three thingamy bobs burning, they also had a massive pile. So there was no falling over at all. So we rang the fire brigade because there was an awful lot of sparks heading into the rest of the site. And the fire brigade weren't happy when they arrived. They put it straight out. So I, I do think we need to revisit. I mean, the woman got really upset and we said, look, nobody's going to take your pitch off of you, but, you know, this could have got seriously out of hands because we haven't had any rain either, so it was quite dry. There was a couple there. There was, there was the plot owner and a friend who was helping her burn and they were burning pallets, basically, that they'd made a shed out of. So, and they'd also said that somebody on the site said they could burn. So I definitely think we've got to revisit the burn policy and.
I can, I can bring, I can bring this back.
The leaflet says, yeah.
Is now accompanied with the rules for new plot holders, which explains in more detail compost burning and waste disposal, disposal for extreme. The pallets that they were burning were not theirs. They inherited that. They took over that plot and it was a massive ramshackle shed that had been built by the previous tenant that they were trying to clean themselves. And in hindsight, we probably should have asked the technicians to remove it rather than them try to burn it.
I do, I mean, they were trying to remove it, but she had a sports car, so she wasn't going to get much to the tip of her finger. But I, 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 TDC, I've been quite involved in quite a lot of burning of waste on, on a number of sites. Not necessarily in my ward, one of them in my ward. But people need a D7 licence to burn that sort of waste on a site. So we need to be very careful because they are breaking the law and it's quite serious.
Okay, so thanks, Anne. So recommendations committed to note the contents of this report?
We can, if committee wishes, bring back the burning issue.
Burning issue.
Currently, they are entitled to burn as long as they use the respirator bins. If not on fires and they make sure that the wind is blowing away from any properties. If councillors want to re-look at that, then we can have.
Could we have, as this committee, could we have a copy of the leaflet?
Yes, I can share.
We haven't seen that, have we?
Do we have the leaflet available?
Send it as an email. Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks. Just for, if anyone's got any suggestions, feedback.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks. Okay, item five, carbon footprint. I'd just like to say thank you very much for all the work that you've done. This is an amazing, must have taken you weeks.
It took about a month to write the whole.
I could imagine, yes.
So.
Do you want to speak to it? No, no.
Just as funny, frankly.
Yeah, so in 2019, we can actually look to evaluate its carbon footprint and then we just place it in 2017 to compare that to. And it's all back in 2021. We can break it down back to planning. And then obviously, a month ago, this council declared a climate change emergency. So over last month, I've taken the last five minutes working data and produced a carbon footprint report, which is what we're taking. And in a, the carbon footprint is the limited restrictions that we have. The methodology that I used in the calculations, provided by the government. And then our footprint for 2021 and then the requirements of previous year. And then at the end, I've put, which is actually in the report as well, what we need to do next, which are the steps from now, the National Association of Local Councils. We've done the first one, declared climate change emergency. And then, so this is.
That's the easy bit.
And then there's a list there as well from DEFRA, just based all local councils on what actions we can take. Basically, it's to see the questions about it, but also to possibly use that document going forward for the next item, which it's working.
Yeah.
To use as statements on the basis that.
Thanks. So any comments, suggestions from the committee? Councillor Austin.
I just wanted, I mean, I want to say thank you, Mr Nixon, for doing this because it's fascinating. The thing I found particularly interesting was the comparison year on year. So this is how it changed from X year to Y year. I've not seen that done before, but it really helped to understand and obviously the, the sort of blip during Covid time and all the extra work that was done there, which required additional, um, issues, et cetera. I found it really, really interesting. Thank you.
It sort of seems that, sorry, just taking little changes, like, you know, changing the light bulbs and turning computers, that's really had quite a big difference. Councillor Nixon, and then.
Dean, God, honestly, that's absolutely amazing. So well done. But, but I'm thinking that we need to, I mean, I can't imagine many other town councils have done this works in such an in-depth manner. I'm thinking, how can we best use it in all sizes? So with regards to informing the public, snapshots like doing things on social media about it, you know, WhatsApp, handy bike sized pieces, making it accessible to people so that they can see that their changes make a difference, but also making it accessible to other people to realise that this is something that's already been done and they might want to contact you with regards to how they do it and so on and so forth. Because, I mean, that's really, you know, it's groundbreaking for such a small organisation to have something that detailed, really. I think you should be recognised for that and, and for it to just not to sit in the back drawer somewhere, for it to be used, you know, internally, and I'm talking about local councils, parish councils, but also further it with regards to making people aware, this is the type of work that we are doing and this is what you can do to help us do this. So I don't know where we go with that, but I'd like you to think on it.
Yeah, I was going to say, going forward, that probably comes to the next item. That'd be something, the task group will come through and then take aspects of how you can inform the public, how you can go forward and influence the public to do the changes that we've made.
Brilliant.
So obviously, yeah, so that's the next item. So let's just have a bit of a conversation about the actual dean's report.
So councillor Wing.
I, I think I'm the same. I mean, I think the, the most fabulous thing in there is that little formula thing that you created that you were able to put, you know, some of our, some of our stuff that we consume and our electricity, electricity and gas bill. And I get frustrated with, because policy is one thing, but, but most people don't understand policy. I don't understand a lot of policy. What I, what I really want to know is, and what I think everybody wants to knock down in the country is, what can I do with my own little life to contribute to saving the planet, basically, and, and not the ones who want them not flooding? So I'd love to see how we, how you, because you're way ahead of all of us and I think you should be a massive pat on the back. And if we can turn that into a financial saving, then that's definitely going to hit the right buttons. But how can we turn that, 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 that formula, that, that system you've got into something that maybe we could use at home as pilot to then get, and by the side of it's like, simple savings, you change your light bulbs, and then maybe we find a way of offering small grants. But there's plenty of money out there that we might be able to draw, draw down as a, as a, as a, maybe through Ramsgate Town Team. There's plenty of money we could draw down to then enable people to buy the cheaper bulbs. Because, I mean, the energy saving bulbs are expensive. People can't afford them.
Same group though, isn't it? That's what I was saying.
So what I'd like to see is, how do we, because I don't think the government have sorted that out either and certainly TDC haven't sorted that out. I don't really understand what I need to do as a person in, in every aspect of my life to help save the planet. And we're full of all these people talking about it, but nobody says do this, this and this.
So basically, I think what we're doing is we're leading the way on. We see our doing that through the Cabinet Advisory Group, which I'm on. But I think as a town council, this is really good. This is leading the way, showing our residents what we should be doing, you know, what they should be doing in their own person.
It's, it's got the potential to be bottom up, which is the way it needs to be.
Dean, just.
Yeah, so, yeah, it is the next item, but you mentioned this before when we first started doing this. And one of the things that now could produce now is a personalised toolkit. You put in your bills and literally calculate the savings you've made and what, what you can do to change that. I'm looking to adapt that for ourselves. So that is something I've saved on the table. I know that TDC have recently created a new toolkit, so I haven't read it properly because I don't, I'll look at that as well. But there is a strategy out there that we can adapt.
You need a massive pat on the back, Dean. Brilliant.
Well, I mean, I echo everything that's been said by everyone else. It's a magnificent piece of work. And I have to say, I mean, I need to read it a few times to understand it in the calculation. But I am clear about a lot of things that result of this report. Agree with what councillor Wing has said and councillor Nixon. I mean, it would be good to get some, something from this that helps our residents make sort of some changes. But I mean, this is exactly the sort of thing we should be talking about at the annual town meeting. This is the sort of report that we should be discussing because this is pivotal to kind of us going forward as a town council.
Okay, councillor Green.
Yeah, this is a brilliant piece of work. I mean, I think when the council decided to. When the, when the council decided to, to. Carbon Emergency Resolution hours and I'm a bit sceptical. Well, I was more interested when we first started this work. Was real steps that we could do in terms of reducing energy usage. And I think at the time, we found that heating this building. And petrol for the vehicles.
Number one, yeah. And that's shown by Dean's um statistics.
But I don't think we've actually done a very much of that.
No, we haven't, no. This is the next stage.
Yeah, I think we've done that. All right, that's all of it.
So well, I think hopefully with a, putting a working group together, that will help to sort of push it forward. Dean, do you just want to say?
Yeah, um so um one of the things that's on here is so I'm pushing the Nixie more decisions. Uh saving up the changes that we've done. Um one of the changes that council agreed to largely was to go to a more sustainable source for this building. And that was one of the major things that, because the heating and gas was so high. And we've moved over to a hundred percent bio-methane gas. And if we stay like that for the whole of next year, we're going to save six tonnes. Uh which is going to reduce it down to about two hundred and eighty-two kilos, which is a massive saving.
And what's a saving in cost?
Um. I think that, and that's the other thing. So you're saving on, on the environment, but I think cost-wise, I, I, I can't remember if it's about the same or a little bit different.
It's, it's about the same.
Yeah, so the cost saving is, is the same, but we are making impact in that sense.
Okay.
Um but that's, that had been proven over this, yeah, this year, um for twenty twenty two. But that is one thing that's, um. Unfortunately, these things take time to then collate and repair, but um that, that is one thing that is happening. Um and just, just to add this as well, that I sent this report to Hannah Scott at TDC, the Climate Change Officer. She's going to read through it, check it, give it comments and feedback.
Yeah, that's great.
Well done.
That is one bit.
Town back in the door.
That's, that's something we need to talk about, yeah. Councillor.
Cheers.
I was just going to, uh picking up on the um suggestions that we, we provide information for residents as to what. We can do in the future. That last year in the autumn, we did the first big green week in Salat. And that comprised an assortment of events run by different groups and so on, but also a collection of information sources. Um where, where people can find out more or work out what to do, how to, you know, how to assess their home. Or how to improve their, their um carbon uh emissions, et cetera, et cetera. So I've got quite a list of things that I can send off in case any of the children are of use. Um that we use that and it will give us an opportunity towards the end of September, I think normally. So it gives us an opportunity maybe to make a bit of a fuss at that stage about what we're doing as a council and how we want to help residents.
That's what, what I was going to say.
A target to aim towards later in the year.
Yeah, great.
Okay, any other comments? Right, I've got a recommendation to adopt the Ramsgate Town Council carbon audit that Dean has written. And use the document as guidance for the Climate Change Emergency Working Group Action Plan. Which is um, yeah, which is the sort of next item, really. So can I have a proposal seconded?
Yeah.
We're all.
Councillor Moore to second.
And can we minute a vote of thanks to the committee?
Please, yeah, that's a good idea. A big, a big thanks.
Yes.
So we're all in favour, presumably. Thank you. Right. So now we're on to, what we're talking about, item six, the Climate Change Working Group, setting that up. With an action plan.
Thank you. Um Town Park has produced this report for you. Um basically, following declaration of climate change, you know, climate change emergency by the council in January. This is a consideration now needs to be given as to how this can be taken forward. Um Town Park has brought the terms of reference for a climate, climate change working group. Which was supplied with your, your pack. And the membership would be, uh if you accept these, four elected members from Ramsgate Town Council. And four voting members from the local community, not elected members or staff, so really from the community. Um. The appointments and removals from office by resolution of the Immunities and Environment Committee is straight for council. Restrictions on appointment none. Uh the quorice of this uh group would be three. Uh number one, meetings for the council will be a minimum of four. These can be face-to-face or held virtually. Uh the chair to be appointed by the Immunities and Environment Committee is straight for council. The chair should be an elected member and the chair will have an original and casting vote, which is what we're used to. Also, the terms of reference can be amended as requested by the group. Uh via the Immunities and Environment Committee or for council. And the terms of reference, possible areas to be covered, you will see, if I can move them out if you wish.
Um do you want that, Jean? Okay, just to read them.
Maybe for the public.
Um.
Yeah, go on.
Yeah, right. Establish a green agenda that includes developing a resilience policy and engaging flood defence measures. Support and promote the green initiatives of the district and county council. Ensure that all council buildings are as energy efficient as possible and that energy is not wasted through unnecessary heating and lighting. Use green energy sources and environmentally friendly products. Plan for a green community in the neighbourhood plan. Limit the use of plastics, especially single-use plastics in the council. Reduce waste and recycle and recycle as much as possible. Protect important open spaces and carbon sinks and support the council's aspiration of creating a jubilee forest. And look at the existing powers of the council as regarding climate change. So the group will regularly report back to the Environment and Imme- Immunities Committee, oh, sorry, it's the other way around. And within six months after inception, will have drafted a plan of action for late twenty twenty two onwards that is realistic, measurable and deliverable. The group will then report on progress, issues, issues arising and outcomes regularly thereafter. Officers, officers will attend to support groups necessary and the group may invite other parties to attend and to contribute to meetings as it decides. The group will fix its own timetable for meetings. The genders and meetings should be published on the council website. So the, the public will see everything that is going on. An officer would be designated as the lead officer for the working group. Um. You can approve these um this evening and then obviously it goes to councillors.
Hmm.
Um so Town Park is, is advising that we advertise for the members from uh residents. Um in the following lines, Ramsgate Town Council is seeking four members from the local community for a newly established climate change working group. Which has been set up following the declaration of a climate change emergency by the council earlier in the year. The purpose of the group is to influence, facilitate, communicate and carry out projects that will result in a lower carbon footprint for the council itself. And the Ramsgate Parish area. The process will be inclusive, comprehensive and positive. If you are interested in experiencing, considering and implementing matters relating to climate change and carbon neutrality. The council would welcome the agreement from you. This is an opportunity to influence how the town council functions. So the two recommendations from the Town Park's report are to consider and approve the terms of reference for a climate change task group. And to consider how and where from the non-elected members should be sought.
Thank you. Thanks, Anne. And so let's do recommendation one to consider and approve the terms of reference as a group. So comments, members, ooh, sorry.
Um about third councils that have adapted the climate, I would say, it's linked biodiversity. Minut as well, and I think that is equally important.
Okay.
Something we should consider in the term.
Okay.
Voting biodiversity. And my other point was, in the spirit of conserving energy, I think this. Group should normally make a note.
Right, uh what else? Um I think one thing I'd add to is, um can we monitor progress over time? So, well, actually, we are doing that, aren't we? So we come back, we meet every, or the group meets every six months, is that right? It's gonna be four times, four times. We'll put it back, four times a year, okay, so we need to monitor what's our progress. Do we need, and the other point is, do we need extra resources? As in from the council, as in staff?
And that, that would be the town, the town park will decide in relation to offices.
See, that brings, you know, as one officer dedicated to this.
And whether or not you want, it says to um link up with TDC and KCC.
Yes, yes.
Their offices are quite valuable.
Yeah, definitely, yeah, okay. Any other comments?
I think the group will ask to take more resources.
Sorry.
The group will ask the council.
Yeah, for more resources, yes, of course.
Councillor Wing is like proposing to accept the recommendation of that petition.
Yeah, do you want?
I'll have to propose to the.
I, I mean, I, I, I see the value in uh virtual meetings. But I also see a value in a mix of meetings, uh and I think it is important for a group to meet face-to-face. But hopefully, everybody would walk to the meeting or get there in a sustainable way. I, 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 I do think it's.
The wing, actually.
I do think it's important that people meet face-to-face on occasion, so I would be putting maybe fifty, fifty, fifty. Uh fifty percent of the meetings are virtual and, and I would also make it flexible so that if you wanted to meet virtually, you could. So, so, so that you've got the option of being, being in that meeting virtually or in person, so that we, we're giving people a choice. Uh but I do think it's important that, uh particularly as we've got residents involved, that people get to know each other on a group like this. Because I would hope that this group would be active in getting out there and doing stuff as well. And I'd hope that some of those, uh, some of those what's next, uh that, for me, there isn't a heavy enough weight on, on how we're going to. Engage with local people to take practical steps. Uh it's still, it's still a bit up here for me and I think we've got to get down there with, with our locals and, and encouraging. And giving them advice and, and simple ways in which they can help reduce their plastics or, so, so.
Start or sum ways.
Yeah, I think it all evolves out of the group.
Yes, it should.
I think the residents, it's good that there's fifty percent, uh, uh fifty, a fifty fifty split. Because it'll be interesting to see what the residents bring to this group. Be very interesting.
Councillor Heather, okay.
Only on the subject of meetings, I agree with councillor Wing about meeting in person most of the time. And I have to say that I don't think, I mean, because I've been running them myself, hybrid meetings are not that good when you've got a couple of people up on the. Um screen and a couple of people in the room, it's quite difficult to, um that's just my comment on that one.
Okay, councillor Green's got a proposal on the table. Can you, can you read it out?
Um to, uh to approve the terms of reference to the climate change task group with, with two modifications. Add, uh this would be, we would add promoting biodiversity and that, uh just to meet remotely. That is your proposal, councillor Green.
Can I have a second over that, please?
Not the latter part, the first part, yes.
Yeah, as, as much as possible, but definitely not always.
So we have to.
If, if we could change the wording of the second part to, to make available the opportunity to.
Meet virtually.
Then, then that leaves it to the group to decide. Would that be acceptable to you, councillor Green?
You could meet remotely, councillor Green, and anyone else who wants to, I know, if or whoever wanted to.
A hybrid.
A hybrid meeting.
It's looked really well here because of the big screen.
It doesn't work well for me at the university, Trish, and I, I facilitate meeting groups there.
No, I know.
Personally, I prefer to meet in person, but.
The big screen does certainly make a difference.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, it does. So you're happy to amend that? Okay, so hybrid meetings. Hybrid meetings?
Hybrid meetings.
Okay.
Which is, which is within.
It's personal.
Yeah. Okay, I need a second over that, please. Votes now, please. All those in favour? Thank you. That's passed. Okay, so.
And the second one.
Recommendation two, to consider how and where from the non-elected members should be sought. Is that something a lot of other councils have done then, according to the Town Park, that they've had?
I would think so. Uh she's suggesting that we do this and, and she's given you the wording within the report.
Yeah.
Um so if you're happy with that word and then you need a proposal seconded to agree that, and that's the way we would do it.
So.
Propose seconded.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So um all those in favour?
Um.
Any against? No. Okay, that's passed then. Thank you.
Chair, we haven't got on here which members would be part of this group. I'm assuming that the Town Park would contact right round the volunteers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
I mean, you could do that, but that would delay it.
It would indeed, it would indeed. You may wish as a committee to decide to volunteer. And I can pass on to Town Park for you.
There's one thing we didn't discuss was talking to TDC as Dean's, TDC and KCC. And trying to get involved with that or other parish councils, town councils.
That's what you would bring to your task.
Yeah, I suppose so, yeah.
Could I make a suggestion? Because I don't necessarily want to engage with TDC or KCC. But my remit would be trying to engage with locals. So can I suggest that we ask, that, that Laura sends out a little, a little note, do you want to be part of this committee? And what, what aspects of your contribution? What, what, what do you think? How do you think your, your, what would you bring to it? So I'm very much about getting out there with people and, and working with people to change.
It says in it.
So I don't want to do TDC.
It's, it's in climate change and carbon new challenge.
House thinks, well, it's very much a case of what, what are you bringing to this for us to want you on it?
So why don't, why don't, why doesn't Laura just, because there are missing people from here that may well want to, uh, yes. And I think it's important that, that we try and find out why people want to be part of this group.
So it's, it's, sorry.
Hold on, hold on, members.
That would delay a decision for about five months.
Five months?
Until this can be confirmed.
Can it not be done remotely?
Um, yeah, I, I expect the Town Park would bring it somewhere.
To somebody in the meeting.
But if you, if anyone wanted to volunteer now, I can pass that one and then this is entirely up to the committee.
Can we, yeah, does anyone want to volunteer?
I, if I would volunteer, but my remit would be not talking with KCC or TDC. I'm very much about the practical aspect of, of, of change. I'm not interested.
Remit, Dean.
Um I was just going to add, so um the membership chair for the um terms of reference is as appointments and removals from office by resolution of the Immunities Committee, such for council. So they'll look for the council.
But when is the next full council meeting?
It's still, it's still once a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that something we want to do?
Potentially, um yeah, you will, in theory, it would be annual council in May. When you, when you discuss your committees.
Well, that's okay, because we've still got to advertise for residents and that's not going to be quick. So we're already halfway through March, we've got April, May, so, you know.
Well, let's, do you want to decide to do that then, to bring it to full council in May?
I, I, members, I'll have a word with um Town Park tomorrow and we'll, we'll come up with something.
Councillor Green.
One of the reasons I, I've moved the addition of biodiversity is that KCC have just published the trade policy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um quite an important policy, I think, for this council.
Okay.
And, and they're asking for, for comments. Now, I, I hoped that this committee would make comments on our behalf. It doesn't look as though we're going to make that.
I think the problem is that meet is only meets every, what is it, four times a year?
Uh yeah.
Yes. So the, the climate change task group really will need to meet more times.
Hmm, definitely in between that.
Because otherwise nothing will happen, will it?
So, so, sorry, councillor Green, can I ask when they need feedback for that particular?
I can't remember. I think it's. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Shall I try and Google it?
What can that go to? There's not another committee meeting that we go to then? To, for comment, like planning or something. It's not really fit with that, does it?
Kent County Council would like your views on Plan Three. Sett. For twenty twenty two to twenty thirty.
It's quite important, a week.
I can't find it, I've got.
Submit something, isn't it, from the Town Council then? That's the first climate.
On the second of May.
What, what have you looked it under, Trish?
I just did. I just did KCC's tree strategy.
All right.
Members, there could potentially be an extraordinary council meeting in April anyway, but let me run this with pass the Town Clerk. And we'll sort something out for you.
I would, I would have to back councillor Green on, on, on the urgency of that and for us to be able to.
I've got it.
Things at Town.
Yeah.
Town Clerk.
Need and take part in the plan.
Okay, yeah. Would you like, who wants to volunteer? So we need four elected members from RTC. I mean, we could do that now.
Second of May closes, second of May.
So who wants, does anyone want to volunteer from this committee for the climate change task group?
I would volunteer.
Okay. Councillor Green, councillor Wing, I will too. And so we need one more. Unless we go, unless you email the councillors.
So do we, we have three definite?
Three definite, no, no more?
If no one else, after the rest, I will, but I'd rather, because I am very, very insatiable.
I like guys. Okay, well, let's, so three councillors put themselves forward. And then could you email the rest of the councillors and ask who would be interested?
Yes, of course, that lasts.
So when will we hold our first? And will we have to advertise for the other four members, don't we?
The Town Clerk will do that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Particularly helpful that you.
Yes, yes, we'll try and sort of link them together. Yeah. Dr Scott's done some really good work. She's done really well. Yeah, so. Yes, you know, you've met her. You were digging trees, councillor.
We were, we were plenty.
Yes. Did you see the gravediggers who were next to us? They've made a most beautiful.
Perfect, yes. I'm sure they were gravediggers.
Probably were. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Arlene.
You're welcome.
Item seven, civic matters, Dean.
Thank you. Kim Hock here to mayor's, who had to report here. It stretches from March twenty twenty one to March twenty twenty two and it's all the events that the current mayor and deputy have attended. Very busy, very local, very, very local.
Very busy.
Which is wonderful. Too many to mention, but it really is a, a collection of all sorts of events with the community.
Very impressive.
Very amazing.
Councillor Moore.
I, I find this very interesting, yes. But there's lots of things, both, none of them I've, I've seen because I'm blocked. I can't get into the mayor's.
Great. It's the emails, you mean?
Yeah. You know, what, what she's doing. I'm blocked.
Okay. What happens is people invite the mayor, it's always been this way, they invite the mayor, it's offered to the mayor. If the mayor is unable to do something, it is normally offered to the deputy. Are you not receiving?
I get jobs for the deputy.
Yeah.
Three or four I've had. But the rest of it, what the mayor's doing, like there was a speech on International Women's Day pre-recorded. I would like, would have liked to have heard that. And then there was another one, the mayor gave a talk on believing in it. And I would have liked to have been able to hear that, but because that, for some reason, perhaps she just doesn't like me, I'm blocked.
Stop on what?
That's it.
I don't know what. So just not included in you? Would that be something that councillor Moore could be included in?
Dean, most of what the mayor does is, is on social media, our social media, yeah? Yeah, all his speeches.
You want to come through the mayor's emails and then Kim would offer them out?
Yeah, the historic memorial, for example, I put it earlier and I don't think that was fully streamed. But if there is.
Yeah, I went there.
Yeah, if there's an issue, perhaps speak to Kim and see what we can stick out for you.
I have done.
Oh, okay.
But I'm still blocked.
I don't understand what, I mean, emails or social media or, I don't understand what is blocked?
I, I can't get in. I can't get in, online to the mayor's, what the mayor's doing.
Online, that's in the emails, her emails?
Yep, I, I can't get in.
Aren't they male emails?
They're going to the mayor.
Talk to her Facebook.
I can't get in.
Facebook is this?
Yeah.
The mayor's page, Facebook page is fully public. It's operated by staff. It's fully public, public. And the only people that would be blocked from that are abusers.
Oh, there you go.
Oh.
If he abusive would be.
I started off corrected.
I'm not saying you, but they are the only people that would be. So we're looking to why you can't. I think she has to. Can it?
She's got a camera.
It'd be an online candidate, shouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Could, could Kim have a look? Could you ask him to have a look?
I went to the thing in Charlotte Court because Mary King told me about it and she said, will you come with me? But apart from that, I've no other knowledge of it.
Okay, well.
I think that's pretty, when I was a deputy mayor, I mean, Ralph Rashard does most of the functions. And I only did functions when she didn't want to do it.
That's the normal procedure.
And then I would get an email asking me to do it, so.
That, that's all right, but you also like to know what the, the mayor is doing because you might want to go and watch or listen or whatever.
Good point.
Definitely fair enough. Obviously, the mayor can't invite other people along to other, other events that aren't hers.
That aren't hers.
Her events, yes, and they are, I think they're fully publicized, but we'll, we'll check it out.
Thank you.
We're looking to it, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, so the mayor has done an awful lot and she has monthly lists of key events. Her Facebook page reached thirty two thousand, over thirty two thousand, which is up by five hundred and twenty six to the stage.
Do you want more?
A total of some of three thousand has donated from the Mayor Fund to the mayor's chosen charities, which is East Kent Men Cat, Fordland Fields School, Ramsgate Sea Cadets, Ramsgate RN Alliance, Sunny Winter Shelter. And other donations made were to the Channel Dash Memorial Fund. And she's purchased a lot of litter pickers which she, that she's handed out to the public. And she's very grateful to be, for being invited to make these donations. Kim and myself are working on protocols and procedures for the mayor. That's a current review, so we will look.
It's a really good idea.
We're looking to how the mayor is offered and what the procedure, how the procedures are working or not working.
I've done it before, yeah.
Could you, probably turn around the use of the chair?
The use of, yes, that, that will be in that, everything.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea because, you know, if you're a new mayor and you don't know the protocol.
Yes.
It's not a political position. It is a purely ceremonial one. I think that's been forgotten sometimes over the years. So recommendation committee is requested to note the report. Okay, thank you. Item eight, some of Fury Woodland tree works. Eileen, you again? You're busy.
Since we took over Monty Fury Woodland, there has been no work done in there apart from by the volunteers. We are now, we had a fire which was handed to us from TDC when we came over, but it was never, never used as it is now. So they, volunteers at the woodland have acquired a quote due to the following. An oak tree limbs over hanging a property adjacent to the woodland. If limbs came away, the property would potentially be damaged. Same with a sycamore limb is hanging over. I have photographs, so you can probably see, I don't know if you can see this film here. I have pointed out in the report where, where this property is here, if this comes down, it will, it will land on that premises. Same with the sycamore, so that's the first thing that we need. The sycamore is, is there as well. The second of one is a decay, a dead and decaying limb here, a tree that needs removing. The tree will be saved because of the removal. And the other issue that has been highlighted is very similar to what we've, we've had to work on before. Where an oak was removed and they are putting in another oak to replace it. In fact, they are planning through planting for Jubilee anyway, so it would be more trees than that. And that's this one, again, hanging over this wall, which it could be, it's all one sided, there's no growth to that side. So it could potentially come over and hit the, hit the street. So they've got to work for the same people as before and it's. So the cost will be two thousand one hundred and sixty pounds to do the four pieces of work excluding VAT. The cost of checking for TPOs and applying, applying to TDC permission for work is a hundred and fifty pounds. So the actual total is two thousand seven hundred and forty two, the four hundred and thirty two VAT that we can reclaim. So committee has asked to resolve to approve the above tree works. We caveat that in English, it's part within the woodland following removal of the turkey oak on, by the wall as per last time, yeah.
Yeah. Any comments or go straight to the vote?
I'm aware that this will temporarily reserve.
We have a Monty Fury Woodland reserve that is, is not the use, we're starting to use it, so yes, it's coming from that.
I've never heard of a turkey oak. Yeah. No, an English oak.
No, turkeys, they're not, they live in Turkey. Are they?
We're very lucky that one of the volunteers, former tree surgeon.
Councillor Stin. Can I just ask that we pass on our thanks to the volunteers because they do an amazing job.
Yeah. It is, yeah.
And a real, a real hidden gem.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Green?
We're hoping that one of our technicians.
Yeah. Absolutely. We have a, one of our technicians, Josh Matthews, is very keen on learning about cutting trees and that, and he's already got one very, very simple level, it's done on high.
Initial level.
So he's on the initial level of tree surgery. And we will arrange for him to be able to take, spend the time with the tree surgeons.
Good.
And that's.
Can I, you say the last time that what we, whenever a tree comes down, there is flack. It's as simple as that. I, I, I walked through Ellington Park today and the, and the, and the standard cherry trees that were put in that none of us knew they would be that big are budding. So that's, that's going to look beautiful, but I don't know whether we attempt some social media beforehand to say that we are, you know, these are the reasons we're doing it and that actually the oak will come out. But, but, because I don't think we put sapling in, did we put a larger tree in last time, didn't we as well? So it was similar to the ones that, that have gone in Ellington Park, but we didn't think were going to be that big. So I don't, I don't know whether there's any mileage in trying to get some social media out there before we get hammering.
Dean?
The minutes will go online. Obviously, the planning application will go in.
Yeah.
The application goes in, is put in by the company in the name of TDC, but it's my name and it's Tini that gets this made in.
I know, that's, I saw last time and it's just not, it's just not on.
I don't read it, I don't read it, you know.
I'm sorry, ridiculously unfair.
So maybe we've got to pile in on that to offset it because it's not fair.
Dean?
Like Ollie just said, the minutes published and we now do key updates highlighting.
Yes, which is really good.
That I go around social media.
And I will give the reasons as per reports.
Yeah, okay, okay. Can I, any, any other comments?
Oh, just this comment, I mean, it's got really nothing to do with the trees, but I always think it's a huge shame because the Monty Fury synagogue is such a gem.
Yeah.
But, you know, the Monty Fury Society, they've got a talk next week.
Next week.
Yeah, which I'll go, but we don't, that is not open more often. I don't know what we could do to perhaps encourage that.
It's open on a Saturday morning, isn't it?
I don't know whether it's, I thought it was just open on kind of high days.
Yeah.
Yes, I should, yeah. Yeah, because you've got to go and see the garden or the website.
Anyway, it was just.
I mean, maybe a problem with security issues, maybe. I've been told in the past, that's why.
It is such a shame because it is such a beautiful place.
I know, it is, yeah. Okay, thank you. So can someone propose to support this recommendation? Councillor Stin?
So you've got two Greens, get hammering.
Vote please, all those in favour? Thank you. Pass, thank you. And then thank you finally, item nine, date of the next meeting to be confirmed at the annual town council meeting on the fourth of May. So, all right, thanks a lot. Thanks to everybody.
You're welcome.